Your life.
Well, good afternoon. Welcome to the work session. Today is Monday, October 27th. It's approximately 1:00 PM. I am Mayor Eric Enriquez. We will start if you all stand and join me in a moment of silence for the brave men and women of the United States Armed Forces and for our local police department and Las Cruces Fire Department to keep our city safe 24/7/365. If you join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is Pets of the Week. Let's see, Carol?
Good afternoon. I'm Carol Nelson, Digital Content Specialist with the Animal Services Center of the Mesia Valley. This week, our Dog of the Week is Krishna, 80622. I'm a big boy weighing in at around 75 pounds of pure love and excitement. I haven't had many human friends who could teach or play with me yet, so I'm still figuring out how to have fun, but treats and balls are my absolute favorites. I'm eager to learn, and after about 10 minutes of focused training, I start to settle down and really enjoy relaxing. When I do relax, there's nothing better than getting all the pets I can. Together, we can create a bond full of love, fun, and plenty of adventure. And our cat of the week, we're happy to share, has already been adopted, Maze, so we're super happy for Maze, was the sweetest cat, so she's gonna make a great companion. And as always, we like to highlight our long-term residents. We just invite the community, anytime you do come into the shelter, please look at our longer-term residents. They are great companions, but the longer they stay at the shelter, it's harder for them to thrive. Cosette has been with us now 293 days, Cookies and Cream 283 days, Dexter 278 days, and Finn 268 days. So all really good options. I've spent time with all of them. They're all really great, so come visit them, adopt them. And this Saturday, we're going to be at Pet Co from 9:00 to 1:00, so definitely come on out. It's a great time to socialize, get your pet supplies, and bring a friend who is wanting to adopt. So, and we just, we did want to share, we had great success with the vaccination clinic, so thank you to everyone who got the information out there and to everyone who came out and supported us. Thank you.
I just, sorry, really, really quick.
Thank you, Carol. Oh, go ahead.
I made this promise in my newsletter, but if anyone takes Cookies and Cream, I will make you your own Cookies and Cream ice cream with whatever, whatever flavor you want. In addition to them being low cost, I will hand-make you your own ice cream from scratch.
I'll have to remember that when I promote.
Yes, when you promote them, tell them I will make it from scratch for you, so.
Ice cream?
Ice cream, homemade ice cream.
Delicious, thank you.
Jan with Housing, yeah. I don't see her. Okay, so the first item on the agenda is 2.1, Presentation of Architectural Design for the Thomas Brannigan Memorial Library renovation and expansion.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I am Sarah Booth. I'm the Library Deputy Director. I'm excited to introduce our speakers today, Joseph Fimler and Ruben Contreras with Desert Peak Architects and Brad Waters with Providence Architecture. Over the past year, the architects have been working on the design for the Brannigan Library renovation and expansion project. This design has been developed with the input of staff, library stakeholders, and quality of live administration. The architects have taken the spirit and personality of the current building and have made it even better. We are all thrilled with the progress of the design and can't wait for you to see it. I will now turn this over to Joseph Fimler.
Thank you, everybody. My name is Joseph Fimler with Desert Peak Architects. I'm here with Ruben Contreras, who is the project architect, and Brad Waters, who is our library consultant and also an architect. Let's see. So we were brought on board earlier this year, and I wanted to kind of give you a little bit overview of the timeline. Brad has been working with the city since 2023 on a master plan, master plan for what to do with the existing Brannigan Library, and he did a lot of work, a lot of community involvement, a lot of charrettes, a lot of reaching out to peers and staff, and peers across the nation about library design, as well, him is very well-versed in it. So one of the, some of the goals of the master plan were to address the future, the current and future needs, the space needs of the building itself, to modernize the building, which was built, I believe, in 1984 as a one-story building. So modernizing it will improve the Brannigan Library quite a bit, as well as make it a lot more efficient, increase the accessibility and inclusion of programs across the library, as well as support the operational sustainability with appropriate staffing, budgeting, and funding strategies, which is to say, what we're trying to do is make the building a lot more efficient. As you know, the building has multiple levels. It's slightly recessed below grade, so one of the things we've been talking about, and Brad has been helping us understand more and more, is that the building may be getting bigger, but it's getting more efficient as it becomes more open and more easily to, easy to staff. I'm gonna turn this over to Ruben for a second.
I'd like to give you a brief explanation of how we've arrived at our current design. It started off with observation of the existing building. We realized that there was a special character to the existing building. It was initially designed as a park above a library, and eventually, they built out the second floor addition. Initially, that park was envisioned as an occupiable space. Of course, to enter the space now, you need to descend into the earth. It is partially submerged as a building, and that's part of the special nature of it, is how you actually experience the existing structure. So we wanted to maintain that with the new design to some degree. We want to have a close tie and close relationship to the earth while respecting what was already there. We saw the library as a vessel for knowledge within the earth, a space where people could gather and participate in rituals of knowledge. And from those observations, we developed this concept statement. The Brannigan Library is a vessel where earth and sky merge to accommodate the retention of information and to intrigue and invite the community to share rituals of knowledge. From this concept statement, we've developed our architectural design. We've taken certain words from this concept statement, and we've recognized how those words can be translated into forms of architecture. So we've looked at certain things like earth and sky and related those words with formal pieces of architecture. For example, the earth, you know, that could be represented, represented through things like carving and revealing various openings within a form, and then sky can be an experiential feature within the design. It can illuminate, and formally, you can reveal certain objects. To intrigue and invite, we wanted to make sure that the building itself had a prominent presence for the community. Right now, the entrance is somewhat hidden. Of course, you have to kind of go around a bend and then descend down a ramp, and it can't be seen where to enter the facility. So from feedback from the community, one of the biggest things we were hearing was that they wanted an entrance that was more prominent, and we wanted to make sure that whatever we did with the building, it gave it more of a civic presence, something that was easily seen from both Main Street and from Picacho Avenue. So to intrigue and invite, that was something that was really important to us. We wanted to make sure that the design itself drew people in and was well-known as a community space. We want to be prominent in form, and we also wanted it to be experientially interesting through things like introduction of contrasts of light. In these images you see in front of you, there's a few items that we were drawn to that we felt like had a close relationship to this concept. The cenotes in Mexico has this play between the earth and the sky, as well as the introduction of light. Also, the Antelope Canyon here, this kind of slit was reminiscent of the way that you currently enter the space, and also had a sense of mystery. So we wanted to incorporate these things in the design as well.
So part of the master planning process was to develop a strategy to tackle this building, and what we came up with, or what Brad and the team came up with at the time, was a phased approach. So the first part of the construction would be the new construction that you see in the green top left-hand corner. So Phase 1 would consist of a new face to the Brannigan Library, so the new construction would only be 6,641 square feet, but the renovation would be over 33,000, and that includes the second floor. One of the strategies that we kind of went back and forth and talked about was how are we gonna do all this work to that building as it's being occupied? So the plan is to not to, to completely vacate the building, and as you notice on the, one of the other bullet points, is that a lease cost and moving cost is included in the opinion of probable cost for Phase 1, which is 19.8 million. So as I mentioned, vacating the whole building, addressing mechanical, electrical, plumbing issues that have been there since, you know, 1984. We talked about in the master planning, as well as early on in the programming phase, you know, maybe only doing the addition in the bottom floor, but the mechanical units are on the roof. A lot of the infrastructure is tied in throughout the building, so as we talked about it more and more, there's a lot of efficiency to do as much work as possible in this Phase 1 when the building is vacated. We did leave a certain portion of the second floor as part of Phase 2, and that's just a matter of, you know, we can't do it all at once. Let's try to leave a little bit for Phase 2, so that we can not take off too much, too much in Phase 1. So the anticipated start date is 2027. Currently, we're in design development. We've been on board for a little over eight months now, doing schematic design, doing the renderings that you see in front of you today. We're working towards in-design development now, where we're starting to bring on engineers, mechanical engineers, structural engineers, and figure out how to make this a reality. The construction document phase will take all of next year, 2026, so by the end of 2026 is when we'll be, have a complete shovel-ready packet for bidding, ready for 2027. The current building is slightly recessed. One of our plans is to bring up one of the internal floors, but we can't bring up the whole building. So there will be a new entry plaza that is slightly recessed about a foot four inches, with an accessible sloping sidewalk down to it. We are adding a few other things to the site, such as ADA parking, a bus parking and drop-off. There's also room for the bookmobile in the back, and revising some elements of the parking lot, but leaving the site mostly intact. Let's see. Phase 2 of construction is slightly less renovation area, as I mentioned. The new construction, this will be a majority of the new construction, and I'll just flip forward for a second to show you the plan in the top right-hand corner. The green area is that new construction, which we're expanding to the north. I know you all are familiar with the Brannigan Library, so where the amphitheater is and the space between the building and Picacho, that's where all this building is gonna happen. And as you know, the site slopes up, slopes up to the east, so the children's area, which we're placing in that farthest east portion, will be more or less a below-grade. So if you think back to the concept, we're kind of, we're in this building where we're coming out below-grade, we're reaching out to the community, and I hope you see some of the concept ideas in our images later. So again, if the anticipated construction date for this portion was not, is not known yet, but the opinion of probable cost is 14.5 million, which includes, again, technology, moving, lease, project soft costs, and 15% contingency. Let's see. So it does say, so what we're doing is, in Phase 1 would be completed, the atrium gallery that I mentioned would be completed, and the staff would move back into the space. So this area in green would happen during, when the building is occupied. So there would be a fully functioning library system with all the programs that we've laid out in the programming phase in Phase 1. So it's, you know, it's not ideal, but it's, it has all the spaces we need. And as we expand into Phase 2, that's why it says expand the children's services area, because we do have a children's services area in Phase 1, but it'll grow. And there'll be an addition of study rooms, a new staff break room, and the third story, which we're calling the Oregon Room, with the views to the Oregon Mountains, which you'll see at the end, which we've overlapped with the boardroom program space to save a little bit of square footage there. So we'll kind of, me and Ruben will kind of work back and forth, talking through some of these images.
Yeah, so what you see in front of you is basically this idea behind that street presence that Phase 1 would bring to the library. This would be the new. This would be that new sunken plaza coming down. So this is looking, obviously, towards the Oregon Mountains. What you see is the double-height space is gonna be that new lobby space, and then entry vestibule in the lower space that would also accommodate a café area. This is another view of that same space, kind of just a little bit more forward. So again, you can kind of see, obviously, we're giving this building a whole new face. We want to make sure it's prominent. We want to give it a presence as a civic structure, and also create a number of outdoor spaces. So again, that café on the interior would bleed out and provide an outdoor seating area for the café as well. We'd have tiered seating and some landscape renovations as well. So we foresee this as being a nice, activated, shaded, occupied space.
And this is, this is all taking place on the north side of the building, so we're taking advantage of the north light, using nice big windows to let light in. The lobby gallery is the main entryway, so that could be used as a gallery space at times. It's, you know, it's the front space of the building. As you'll see later, the, we wanted to make sure that the second floor is inviting to the public.
Part of what you see in this image is the idea behind this connection to the earth. This, the materiality that we're showing on this front facade is kind of reminiscent of the layers and the strata of the earth when you cut into it. We were also planning to create this sense of emergence out of the earth. As you'll see in the next image, the whole roof line basically emerges from Campo all the way over to this new entry space.
So the, working from left to right, you see the left area, that'll be the children's area. As I mentioned, it's kind of, as it goes towards Campo, it's submerged into the ground. That idea of that kiva space, that intimate space for learning, and then expanding out towards the west with the lobby gallery space, and then behind it, you see the Oregon Room, which, as you'll see later, will have a great view of the Oregon Mountains.
Here's just a close-up of that entry plaza, the main entry. You can see, we want to make sure, you can see deep into the space from the, from the entry. We want to make sure that the entrance is, it's much more prominent and visible to the public, and again, that kind of outdoor seating space as well. Once you enter the space, this would be after the Phase 2 renovation would be complete. This ties back closely to our concept of creating this connection between the earth and sky. This canyon is what we perceive as this lobby feeling like. We want it to have kind of earth and tones. We want it to have ample daylight. We want it to have this sense of mystery, because if you look at the very end of that corridor, there's this curved aspect to it where you can't quite see the very end of it. So at, of course, at the end of it is the children's space program, and we want to make sure that it creates this sense of intrigue for those children. On the left-hand side here, you can see the café space I mentioned earlier. Right from the entry, you get a clear view deep into the existing library space where the stacks are, and you have a much more prominent idea of how to access that second story. Right when you land on those stairs, you'll have access to some public restrooms and a nice public seating area that overlooks the lobby as well. This is the concept for the Oregon Room, which we see as a multi-functioning space. This would be that third-story space that has a clear view of the Oregon Mountains. This space is conceived as being used as a space for gathering, a space for conferences, and also, we are planning to put in a small demonstration kitchen. There's a connection between the interior and the exterior for this space. Where on the exterior balcony, we plan to provide a rooftop garden space that could be used as a teaching tool in combination with that demonstration kitchen as well. So now we're looking at the existing space that currently holds the library stacks. Where we're actually viewing that space from is from a new loft area where we will have a number of meeting spaces, and also, what you can kind of see within this image is the incorporation of natural light. Right now, that space, because it is so deeply submerged in the earth, there's very limited, if any, natural light coming into the space, so we plan to open up the roof to include some tiered skylights that would also house some of the solar panels on the roof as well. Again, this is kind of looking down from the second story onto that main lobby space, another conceived reading space, also looking at the introduction of natural light through the use of skylights here as well. And this is our concept for the children's area. This would be, again, this is Phase 2. This would be the expanded area. We want it to be a colorful space. We want it to be playful. We want it to have this sense of mystery and intrigue. We also want to incorporate natural elements like, like wood, things that would help younger children develop and acquaint themselves with these types of materials. And then a separate teen space as well, kind of at the back of the existing lobby space. We conceive that back wall as being presented with a nice mural, and just creating this larger space for the teens to occupy.
This is a view of the adult services area. This is pretty much the existing space and the existing columns. Now, you can see the mural for the teen area in the back there. This is an aerial view of Phase 1 and Phase 2, a completed design. And that's it.
Thank you. Sarah Booth, Library Deputy Director. I would like to thank our presenters, and now we stand for questions.
Thank you, Sarah, and everyone else for your presentation. Do we have any questions? Counselor McLeod?
I'm not sure if it's any questions particularly, but I love the concept. I think it's great. I was thinking about when I was a kiddo in Utah, and some of those designs of walking into what felt like a cathedral of knowledge, right? I think that is something would be a great blessing for our, not to be sort of cheesy about it, blessing for our community. So I really appreciate your work on this.
Counselor Matisse?
Yeah, again, I just want to express, I'm very happy with the architectural design, but, you know, the Oregon Mountains has always been a great asset for me, coming from New York City and landing in Las Cruces, and I love the aerial view of those Oregon Mountains. You've, you've taken a great part of Las Cruces, why many people come here and accented it. Thank you very much. Good job with Earth and Sky.
Counselor Flotus?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I, I too support this endeavor. It's going to be a few years before. I think a lot of children. It's going to be a few years before, I think, a lot of children who are not even born yet would be the beneficiaries of this, this project. And what I like so much about it is that it's going to create a space for teens. And it'll be a good, if they, when kids are little, they go to the library and they look forward to it. They love their little bag, they get their little books, and they feel like they're really big time. And that stays with them through, through the years. I know that's how my, I did that with my children, and to this day, they're avid readers. And, you know, they were, it was a very, very good environment. So I want to thank you all for, as I said, it's going to be at least, what, another decade before it's really, so probably six feet under, but thank you very much. It was just, the presentation was beautiful, and, and thank you for this endeavor. Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else?
No, I just want to say, great, great design. But I've always said, long overdue, and looking forward to it. What is the space, again, when we talk the total square footage of the library? What, what is it, and what will some of this new space? I must have missed the numbers.
The total square footage is sixty thousand square feet and a little bit more. What kind of spaces are in there? There's going to be the adult services area.
Well, no, not exactly the space, just talking about area. What kind of total area are we looking at in the library?
Total end is sixty thousand square feet.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, City Council, Sarah Booth, Library Deputy Director. We have about forty-five thousand right now, don't we? I think, yeah, we have forty-five thousand, so the expansion will be up to sixty.
All right, thank you. Was there anyone from the public, anyone from the Library Association that wanted to say anything at this point, or? Yeah, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Mary Ann Hedrickson. I'm a friend of the library, and, excuse me, just a few things I wanted to say. I think you already know how great libraries are. There's spaces for innovation and productivity. There are places to gather in person. You don't have to spend a penny, but you're welcome. We have computers, internet. We're adding a library of things. People can get jobs, connections with others, they can do research. It's amazing, the things you can do at the library. The return on investment, when you put a dollar into a library, communities get seven to eight dollars back into the community through return on investment for public libraries. And this is essentially a regional library, because there are no other libraries in the county. We serve over two hundred thousand residents of Doñana County and Las Cruces. So this, this expansion and update is quite overdue, as you all have mentioned. A lot has changed since we built the original library, including population, the type of population, the things we want to do, the things we are doing. And this is, as you said, long overdue, and I'm extremely grateful that y'all are doing this. So from my heart, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Say, no, no one else will go to Agenda Item 2.2, the ARPA sub-recipient funding and problematic status update? That problematic, problematic?
There's a problem?
Yes, go ahead, Gabby.
Thank you. Mayor, councilors, city staff, and community members. My name is Gabriela Pratt. I am the city's grant manager, and I am here to introduce to you Brian Kraft. He is our Grant Development and Compliance Specialist, who is leading our ARPA implementation. So this is the first time before council for Brian, so be nice.
We will try.
I know.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmembers, city staff, and the public. My name is Brian Kraft, and I am the Grant Development and Compliance Specialist, leading the implementation of the American Rescue Plan Act projects awarded to the local community partners. The Los Cruces City Manager has requested a status update regarding the American Rescue Plan Act sub-recipient grantees, which brings us here today. The American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA, is a federal stimulus package which aims to provide direct relief to Americans from the COVID-19 virus and its economic impacts. The city has received approximately twenty-four point nine million dollars in two tranches, of which approximately nine point five million has been sub-granted to community partners within the city. All ARPA funds needed to be completely encumbered as of December thirty-first, 2024, which has occurred. These funds will need to be fully spent by September thirtieth, 2026. All organizations are currently on track to expend these funds fully by the deadline. The ARPA sub-recipient grantees have been divided into three subgroups for management within the city of Las Cruces. The community grants is administered by the Grant Administration Program in the Finance Department. The housing grants are administered by the Housing and Neighborhood Services. And our workforce grants are administered by the Economic Development Department. There are seven sub-recipient grantees within the initial ARPA community grants, as outlined here. Lift Fund, noted here as the sixth, has completed its project and fully expended its funds as of November twenty-first, 2023, and will not be presenting today. We will have approximately ten organizations presenting today, so please hold all questions until all presentations have finished. Thank you. Our first presenter, our first presenter today will be from the Boys and Girls Club of Las Cruces. Their initial award was one million, three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars, with funds remaining as of October fifteenth of two hundred and forty-one thousand and twenty-nine dollars. Their scope of work was to pay for acquisition, preliminary engineering design, and a portion of construction costs for a new state-of-the-art facility, which will triple the capacity to two hundred and fifty Las Cruces youth served daily. Presenting today is Ashley Achivaria, our Chief Executive Officer of Boys and Girls Club of Las Cruces.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. First of all, thank you guys for the ARPA funds. As you all know, the ARPA funds allowed us to purchase video for, pay all cash for, for the facility so that we wouldn't have to take out a mortgage while we're raising the funds to get the renovations done. So we appreciate that. So where we're at today, we're really exciting. I'm, I'm, you guys are actually the first one to hear this. When I did this slide, we had raised six point two million to date, but as of a meeting I had this morning, we've raised six point five million to date. We got a three hundred thousand dollar commitment this morning. So the campaign is moving along finally. I think we had to get over that halfway bump, so we got a one point five million dollar gift from Nucendo, which most of you probably saw. That pushed us over the halfway bump, and we've had an exciting couple of months to get to where we are. Our goal is truly to get to seven point five million by the end of the year so that we can break ground. We do have a, the building design's complete. Actually, I was looking at the Branigan Library design and admiring it, because it kind of resembles our design, same architects. But our design's done. We've had a permit waiting here, so we are ready to break ground, but we got to do it responsibly. So we need to raise about another million in order to get there. So the, the goal is to go out to bid soon. That way, as soon as we get to that seven point five million, we'll be in a position to, to break ground in early 2026, so. Most of you are pretty familiar with who we are, but we have served thirteen hundred youth annually. This was last year's numbers. We do have seven satellite sites throughout the city. Sixty-six percent of the youth we serve do report extremely low to moderate household income levels. One of the most important things that we do, as you can imagine, is serve meals. So every day after school, kids are getting fed a full-course supper and a snack later in the day, and then during summer, and on those full days, they're getting a breakfast, a lunch, and a snack. Over eleven thousand meals served last year alone. And then I think another really important thing that we do that a lot of people don't realize is serve teenagers. And so we're, we hold teen nights twice a month. It's open to all community teens, and the goal is to give them a safe space where they're supervised. And I always like to highlight a new partnership this year. Ever since the tragic events at Young Park, Security Concepts has been kind enough to provide security for us free of charge for every teen night so that we can ensure that the teens participating in those programs are safe and secure. So thank you, that's where we are. We're, we're headed there. It's been an exciting time, and we are always looking for more support from the city, if possible. So I think we have to wait for questions till the end. Okay.
Our second presenter will be from Catholic Charities of Southern New Mexico. Their initial award was five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Funds remaining as of October fifteenth is three hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. Their scope of work is to provide direct assistance and behavioral health and medical healthcare services to qualified Las Cruces residents. Presenting today will be Kenneth Theron, Executive Director, and Stephanie Martinez, Director of Community Health and Wellness. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Stephanie Martinez, and, well, since the beginning of this wonderful fund, we've been able to focus on helping families facing eviction or housing instability due to the pandemic. So we've been able to provide rental assistance, utility assistance, as well, we, as well as we've been able to expand our access, have access to free mental health counseling, just helping residents who still have the lingering effects of the pandemic, stress, or anything, anxiety, or anything financially. Most of it is because of the financial rising costs of, after the pandemic. So other than that, beyond this fund, we've been able to secure more partners with schools. We've been able to get out there. We've strengthened our partnerships with landlords, so they know that we are here to assist. So a lot of them are able to bring or send their tenants over, and we are able to assist them with, with that fund. We've also made partnerships with community organizations, and we're able to work together to identify any who are at risk or still dealing with long-term recovery of the, of the pandemic. As well as one of the, sorry, I didn't move the slides. I'm a little nervous. So one of the success stories that we, that we are always highlighting in our office is a local event venue owner in Las Cruces, where when the public gatherings were banned in 2020, she lost everything overnight. Like, she had to return all her money back to all her clients, and she found herself almost like not able to sustain her mortgage and her house and basic living expenses. So through our fund, or the ARPA fund, we were able to provide that assistance, and now she's able to maintain that stability and continues to serve the community in different ways, while it maintained, it takes a while for her to rebuild her business. But she's still doing great, and these are the type of stories that we like to hear every time we are able to help with our ARPA funds. So thank you to all of you for your continued partnership and trust with us with this fund. Thank you.
Our next presenters will be the Community Action Agency of Southern New Mexico. The initial award was one million, seven hundred thousand dollars. Funds remaining as of October fifteenth is seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Scope of work is for the Las Cruces Family Prosperity Demonstration Project and aims to lift one hundred and fifty Las Cruces families disproportionately affected by the pandemic out of poverty through direct cash assistance for eighteen months. Presenting today will be Don Hamer, Chief Executive Officer.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'm Don Hamer, CEO of Community Action Agency of Southern New Mexico. Brian said I have three minutes, so he's going to do aloud when I'm getting close, right? I think we have been updated. We are, our remaining funds as of the fifteenth is fifty-eight, about fifty-eight thousand. So obviously, we're well on our way to complete the project. So for our project, we had a hundred and fifty households in what we call our active group that received payments of five hundred dollars a month, unrestricted for eighteen months. And then we also had a comparison group of around a hundred to a hundred and fifty families each month. We were actually pretty surprised how a lot of those families stayed involved, even though they were just receiving a small amount of money to complete surveys so that we would have good data. So we had three hundred family, three hundred households in total, and the first payment went out in March of 2024, and our last payment just went out in August of 2025. I'm just going to look at my notes, because I can't, oh, it's in front of me, see? My eyes are everywhere, everywhere today. So part, one of the things that we're finding, with our guaranteeing basic income, we just call it a cash transfer project. We find just, there's a lot of folks that just don't really understand it and how they work, how it works. There's a lot of kind of confusion about, oh, you're giving people money, and they're going to do this, and they're going to do that. And so we were lucky enough to partner with the Crimson Research. Dr. Banner is here as well with any data questions. We are still working on our data report. Hopefully, that'll be out early next year. But what we are finding is that one of the most important, I think, statistics of this report is that almost seventy-three percent of these dollars were spent locally and rapidly. So that's extremely important, so that's here. But we know that families are spending this money on food, on housing, on utilities, on really important things that they need, because families know how to make the decisions that are best for their families. We have a lot of statistics. I certainly can touch on some of those. But I think what I want to do is just touch on some of our success stories, because we don't have one, we don't have two, we have hundreds. And that is what's so cool about doing these projects like this, is that there's success, no matter what it is, but we have a lot of really big successes. So I'm going to just talk about Lorena, just for a moment. She is a single mom, has two children, twelve and four, and she has talked to us about how her household, just her household environment as a whole, has improved in so many ways. It's increasing food security. Her family feels like they are able to pay their rent, their utilities, just their improved mental health, less stress. Her family just feels more united. Her children were able to enroll in soccer and in cheer, which is something that we all know is so important, especially for our children and completing high school. We have all these statistics around children being involved in, in good ways. She was also able to save money. She opened a savings account. She'd never had a savings account. She saved money and is now in the process of working with us with our financial literacy program. She wants to save for a house. And she was able to purchase an inexpensive mobile home that moved them out of just a really bad place. So that's just one of our stories, but we have so many. Am I good on time, Brian? One more minute? I'm sharing more then. Here we go. So we have Nora, who was a mother, and she's caring for three children, but also for her grandmother. And she, she was unemployed when the payments started happening. But as the payments started coming in, she was able to get, you know, the car fixed. She's able to do these things that she needed to do to become employed. And so she was able, she's employed now in the recovery field. I don't know what that means, but that's what she's in. And also, she used her income to be able to purchase the home that she was renting from her landlord. Brian said that's enough. Thank you so much.
Our next presenters will be Cruces Creatives. Their initial award was one million dollars. Funds remaining as of October fifteenth is one hundred and fifty-one thousand and one hundred and forty-nine dollars. Scope of work was to address learning losses caused by the pandemic. They will scale up to. They will scale up to existing evidence-based educational programs for K through 12 students in Las Cruces, each of which focuses on project-based learning to improve academic life and wellbeing outcomes. Presenting today will be Sandy Smith, Co-Director of Operations.
Awesome. I am Sandy Smith, Co-Director of Operations. And you will notice of our goal to reach 15,000 students, we are over budget. Meaning we actually met the 20,675 and we still have a quarter to go. So we will be able to exceed our goal, which is super exciting. We have met that goal of connecting with students through our after-school programs, through our camps, classes and family outreach, and through our in-class project-based learning. You will notice down in that, that lower box where things are highlighted in yellow that we're connected with 356 teachers across 41 schools in Las Cruces. And that based on the surveys that we're getting back, we've got some really good grades. We are increasing student engagement, building social emotional skills, increasing student awareness of academic and career opportunities, and increasing the students' understanding of how those academic skills can be used in the real world and letting students practice critical thinking, problem solving and working in a team. I have right here a bag of things which I'm going to hand to Christine. This is the project that Iriery worked on. Who's Iriery, you say? I'm so glad you asked. Iriery is there in the black shirt. On the corner, you can see the teal arrow reaching toward her. Iriery is one of the participants of our programs. She has been in 25 different events, right there next to Iriery in the pale white shirt with her leg forward. And the yellow is Ixley, her little sister. Iriery and Ixley have been in the building so much because of the funds that we were able to make use of through ARPA. Thank you so much for trusting us. And these pieces that are coming around is part of Iriery's internship work. Because we had the structure that ARPA could help us with, we were able to host interns for the last couple of summers. So Iriery's Spanish-speaking skills, we're able, okay, we got to back up just a second. We had seven interns this last summer. This is Iriery's second summer. The project that's coming through, go ahead and reach in, just grab one out. Yep. In fact, let me. Not only does she have the skill for herself, but she also was able to translate the seven other interns' projects. So she is now a permanent part of what Cruces Creatives can offer to the community. I want y'all who have a cup and a ball, go ahead and try it. See, can you get it back in? Because we are very much project-based learning and very much about getting hands-on. I wanted you guys to have a moment to practice it. One of the cool things about Iriery's time with us is that she has become proficient with many tools in the maker space, especially those in the textile room, which is why you see those T-shirts. Those T-shirts were designed and sewn by the girls in classes that were made possible through ARPA. And that cool kid with the quilt block on his front. Iriery actually helped him make that block during our youth quilting project. And then that final picture is the whole cache that we were able to take over to El Jardín de los Niños. Iriery, Iriery has built relationships with the peers around her, but also the adult members of the space, including the senior members, the retired citizens, our seniors, who are also connected with our quilting program. And Iriery now can use every tool in the, in the textile room. That girl is sharp. She's also now at NMSU studying for creative writing. It has been an honor, a privilege to work with these kids, to work with teachers, to do these projects. And we would love the city's support if you guys have ways and access that can help us teach our now highly-trained staff, keep our highly-trained staff of teachers. We would love to hear about opportunities to continue to find funding.
Mayor, I have a question. Mayor, I have a question. At the very end of everybody. No.
Thank you, Sandy. Our next presenter will be Jardín de los Niños. Their initial award was $350,000 with funds remaining of $160,137. Scope of work was to provide direct therapy services and social emotional learning support to advance the health, safety and wellbeing of unhoused and abused neglected children while stabilizing the family. Presenting today will be Michelle Adames, Chief Executive Officer.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Councilors and City Staff. Michelle Adames for the record. First, I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity to utilize the ARPA funds to help support Hardeen's mission. When we first received this award, I will say that we were right in the middle or at the beginning stage of expansion of our behavioral health services. Or actually at the moment that we received the funds, we had just become a trauma-informed care center. And this led us to be able to, to accomplish all the other things that we have done in the last couple of years. I want to start by saying that this has really helped to stabilize many of our families and has helped us to be able to provide a very, a very important service that for many of our families, they would not have accessed elsewhere. So our target population was initially 200 homeless, near homeless, neglected, abused children and youth. Over the first, over the two years, we actually served each year over 400. So our year one outcomes, we had approximately 487 services that were provided. And then in year two, about 475. And so for us, we, we really feel like we were able to even provide more than we expected we would be able to from the initial grant proposal. Through, throughout this process, this also helped us to develop our framework. A framework, should I say, that actually now is guiding the entire organization's mission. And so for many people, they see Jardín de los Niños as the first and foremost where a childcare center, which, which that is true. But the reality is that Hardeen has so many other services. And our, this particular funding has really allowed us to create the different pillars that help to make our organization much stronger in providing trauma-informed care and focusing on breaking this cycle of generational poverty and trauma. So the goals in the framework were to stabilize the family, to quickly minimize the ill effects of homelessness on children and youth. But along the way, we also were able to develop our holistic preventative, trauma-informed and responsive approach to supporting the wellbeing of children and families by lessening the barriers that are experienced through the generational poverty and homelessness, near homelessness and trauma. And so we call it HPTIF. That's what kind of guides, that's guiding all of the work that we're doing. Through this, we provide social emotional learning support to the children in the classroom setting. We have probably the highest needs of children that really are referred to us with such high trauma and such, I mean, some of the needs are really, it's hard to even describe some of the things that our families have experienced. And so within our classroom settings, not only are educators trained to provide the support, but we have clinicians that are actually working side-by-side, providing consultation, helping to support with referrals, helping to ensure that not only are the children being served in the classroom setting, but the whole family is being served in the clinic, in our pediatric clinic. And so we provide all of those services onsite. One of the things that we are constantly looking at is how we can continue to grow, continue to stay current with best practices. And our staff have maintained the infant mental health endorsement. And that's what helps us to remain as the first and only trauma-informed care center in the state of New Mexico with a minimum of 30 hours of trauma-informed and relationship-building training annually. So consistently our, our, our staff are receiving that training and the ARPA funding allowed us to continue to provide that type of training. Staff have implemented the Conscious Discipline Program. And so this program really looks at helping the adults as well as the children. But really we're looking at the adults we're treating for secondary trauma. So we know that as we work with the families that are experiencing trauma and the children, our staff also need to look at how they can, we can be supported. And so conscious discipline really does help us to meet that need. We fulfilled the requirements to become a designated behavioral health agency. With the designation, it really does help us to create more sustainability for our organization. We do know that currently because of the, the funding and because Medicaid is probably going to be cut for many of our families at this time, the Behavioral Health Agency does help us to remain current with everything that we're doing. We also realize that it's not going to be the only way that we can create sustainability because we won't be able to unfortunately, you know, bring in the revenue at this, you know, to really support, continue to support the program fully. So we're looking at other ways as well to continue that. Within the, the clinic, we've established a role of, uh, this ARPA funding has helped us to actually define the role of the clinical manager. And that's an independent licensed clinician who can then supervise all of the other clinicians, which not only benefits Hardeen, but also the entire community because we have interns coming from different universities who are actually onsite training and our clinician is working with them. But they're also going out into the field after they graduate and they're able to work through some of the things that they may not have been exposed to, you know, in other settings. We also have been able to establish through our BHA, we have the outpatient services. So those are behavioral health therapy for children, youth and the caregivers. And then the comprehensive community support services, which really does help to link the families to all of the support systems across our community. And this funding has really helped us to actually establish those positions so that we can then continue to grow and build capacity. The other thing that we've been able to accomplish is through the social emotional learning, we've been able to support development, development of interpersonal skills, self-awareness, self-management and responsible decision-making. And then we do have staff who were trained in EMDR, which is Eye Movement Desensitation Reprocessing, which is a very, very specific type of therapy that I think our families are really going to receive something that they most likely wouldn't be able to receive elsewhere. And so with this, our families have also been able to receive direct therapy in the clinic, parenting education, family engagement, effective communication, relationship building, maintaining consistent schedule and then communicating their needs for additional services. This has been a great partnership for us with another nonprofit, which is FYI Plus, which has helped us to grow our own capacity through the support of the clinicians and the training that we were able to receive to then establish our own clinical manager who will fall under our organization and be able to then supervise other clinicians down the road. So I'll stand for questions at the end. I know there's a lot more I could share, but I do want you to know that we are very grateful for the support that we have received and it has really helped us to build capacity within our organization and to look at growing our services to specialize in trauma-informed care. Thank you.
Our next presenters will be from the Macia Valley Community of Hope. Their initial award was 300,000. As of 10:15, they have $98,890 left. Their scope of work was to support Macia Valley Community of Hope's effort as a homeless assistance provider to recruit and retain landlords to work with and house clients, presenting potential challenges to remaining housed. Presenting today will be Nicole Martinez, Executive Director.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Members of the Council. Nicole Martinez with Macia Valley Community of Hope. Nice to meet you, Brian. We noticed that during the pandemic, we saw a lot of rents getting raised by our landlords. We also saw some disruptions that were happening with our clients as we saw services being retracted, agencies shut down, mental health, substance use needs not being met as easily as we all tried to navigate what you're supposed to do during a pandemic. And so we wanted to mitigate what we saw happening and the huge gap in affordable housing and, and people disrupting in their units. And so we launched the Landlord Risk Mitigation Program. And that program was specifically brought about some other areas. We modeled it after several other states that had implemented something like this. And we were first in, in New Mexico to try this. And some of the things that we thought would help to keep people in their apartments and also to attract landlords to work with voucher holders like Community of Hope are things like helping to pay for extraordinary damages in excess of a security deposit, extraordinary cleaning and pest, pest infestation, delinquent rent up to two months, rents over fair market rent, because again, we just saw rent go over fair market, which is the cap of what we can pay with our vouchers. Other costs required to recruit and/or retain landlords. We have a risk mitigation claim form that landlords can submit. The cap was $3,000, but not every client needed to utilize a full $3,000. These are the goals that we had for our landlord risk mitigation program. We were hoping that we would bring in each year that this existed, three new landlords, that 25 people in the first year would exit to permanent housing, that 10 landlords would be affordable housing partners, assist at least 100 individuals experiencing homelessness and that 75 people would exit to permanent housing. And as you can see, we were able to do that in excess of what we thought we might be able to accomplish. Some of the benefits of implementing this program, we saw that we were able to get people into units a lot more quickly. We could also help pass inspections in units. So for example, we had one landlord that didn't have a refrigerator in the unit, so it failed inspection. And so we were able to get that refrigerator in there quickly. It was going to take them a few months to get that with their purchase orders and things like that. So we got that in there, passed the inspection, moved the clients in as quickly as possible. We've also seen clients staying in the unit. So oftentimes if that client is facing eviction, which we know is really traumatic, especially on children, that our landlords would either not evict that client or if it did have to result in an eviction, they would promise to then take another one of our clients into that unit. Overall, we had 28 landlords that utilized the program and 102 housed clients that benefited from this. We're really grateful for this funding. It was so successful in keeping people in their units and in working with landlords and new landlords that the state has picked up this program. So we'll be coming to ask you for, for more funding for this once it, it ends. And also the, the state has also been offering this statewide now, this landlord incentive risk mitigation program. So thank you for your support in this project.
Our next group of sub-grants will be the ARPA Housing Grants. Natalie Green from Housing and Neighborhood Services will be speaking to both the Macia Valley Public Housing Authority and the New Mexico Housing and Community Development.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilwoman Natalie Green. For the record, the first project is the Oak Street Veteran Apartments. This was an award of about 300,000. We matched it with our community development block grants. The scope of the project was to do a moderate rehabilitation of both the interior and exterior of the Oak Street Apartments. This is a collaboration between both the Public Housing Authority and the Macia Valley Community of Hope to house our veterans experiencing homelessness in the city of Las Cruces. The project is complete. They did a comprehensive renovation of both interior and exterior. So they got new kitchens, new bathrooms, new floorings. They improved some of the HVAC systems, new roofs, stairs. And again, it's 22 units. And then it also included some parking and painting and doors. The success or impact is that we had improved living conditions for our veterans experiencing homelessness. It also helps the city maintain its functional zero. That was a designation that we received in collaboration with the Macia Valley Community of Hope in 2011. Hope in 2011? 15, sorry, 15. And that means that we can essentially, if an eligible veteran becomes homeless in the city of Las Cruces, we can usually house them within 30 days or less. 21 out of the 22 units are leased up as of when I prepared this presentation, and I believe the final one should already be leased up. I should have checked before I came today, but I forgot. The second project that we're managing is the Peachtree Canyon Apartments Phase One. They received $2 million for that project, and that's the construction of 144 units through the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Project. And this was part of the capital stack. It is under construction. They're about just under 60% complete. We're hoping to actually start some pre-leasing activities by the end of the year with some occupancy in the first set of buildings, hopefully in the spring. The buildings have already gotten sheet rocked, stucco. This project was identified as a state, as a successful project, so they actually gave us some additional funds, which I will cover more in the next presentation when I share go-bonds. And with that, I'll pass it on to Economic Development to share about the workforce grants.
Our next group of grants will be the ARPA Workforce Grants. There are five entities within the workforce grants. Four will be presenting today. The Department of Workforce Solutions, whose agreement was finalized on 7/21, will not be presenting today. Our first group presenting will be Mesia Valley Economic Development Alliance with an initial award of $100,000. All of these groups that are presenting today, their funds have been fully dispersed. Their scope of work was funds will assist employers in upskilling their workforce to meet the increased use of advanced manufacturing processes that were the result of pandemic-related supply chain disruptions. Presenting today will be Jessica Lynn Robles, Director of Business Development.
Good morning, Mayor Enriquez, City Councilors and staff. I'm going to largely read, it helps with the three-minute restriction, otherwise I take too many conversational liberties. But thank you for the opportunity to speak here today and for the opportunity to impact our community with Movida's Automate Up program, which is designed to upscale our existing and future workforce with in-demand industry certifications. In today's presentation, we're going to address our progress with $100,000 funding that we received and from the city ARPA. To this date, we have expended and committed the amount of $59,033, leaving just over $4,000 in funding. This funding has gone to existing employers, students, and individuals, and providing them with the funding for required industry certifications. And in case you weren't aware, the Automate Up program was developed on the recommendation from our Advanced Manufacturing Preparedness Study that we completed through Manpower Analytics. So we took the recommendation and created a program to help increase the required amount of industry certifications needed for advanced manufacturing and that industry attraction. As the work in progress with the funding, we have some really exciting commitments nearing completion and in the works. One of the city's largest employers, Electronic Caregiver, they are nearing this month, actually, to have earned the 45 individual telehealth coaching certificates for their employees. In addition, by the end of the year, we anticipate the completion of 26 AWS certifications for their technology teams. This funding also helped with our existing student pipeline. Los Montañas Charter High School, now Cindero Charter High School, supporting them in certifying over 22 of their students this year. On the horizon, our Builders' Performance Institute, DACC is now certified in authorizing, certifying any energy auditors. And we will have certified 20 energy auditors, which is an identified need just for this region and city alone. So we have that funding going out hopefully by the end of this year. And then one project that we're really excited about is our summer/spring boot camps. This is providing us the opportunity to address an industry that's been hard to find achievable certifications for. And we figure a boot camp is the best way to present it to the students and hopefully get those numbers to meet an industry that is in need of the industry certifications. This funding has provided us with the opportunity to work with existing employers in addition to that student pipeline. As I mentioned, Cindero Charter High School, which was previously Los Montañas, but also the Bridges, Southern New Mexico, and DACC. With this funding, Automate Up has been able to prepare the workforce and help them enter the existing employment opportunities provided by already existing employers within our region, which is really key. Of the 103 certifications we've already committed, 71 of those address already existing city of Las Cruces workforce and 32 are city of Las Cruces students. And that is consistent with the certifications varying over 11 different identified in-demand industry certifications. So that's a really large number for the number of certifications that we have. Shows that a really good variety, we have a really good reach of different industries and required certifications. The impact really is about community, and that wouldn't be achieved without properly fostering the correct partnerships within the community. And these important partnerships allowed us the ability to identify the existing resources using certifications that are here or certifications that are leveraged and unified, used, leveraged and utilized by our existing employers or educational systems. And then to identify what those opportunities are also, finding certifications that weren't meeting the in-demand skill set. And without some of these key partnerships, as you see there, we wouldn't have had the successes that we've had thus far in the program.
Moving right along, our next presenters will be the Southern New Mexico Independent Electrical Contractors. Their initial award was $200,000, and this award has also been fully dispersed. Their scope of work was to help and support the federally recognized electrical apprenticeship program to address learning loss as a result of the pandemic, as well as supporting a mobile lab trailer for outreach events. Presenting today will be Gentry Roberts, Executive Director.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much. Again, my name is Gentry Roberts. Mr. Mayor, Council, and staff, thank you so much for having us here today. Like Jessica Lynn, I'm going to go ahead and read off. We've got a whole lot going on. These dollars have been immense in growing our chapter. For those that don't know, IEC Southern New Mexico is one of over 50 chapters nationwide, supporting the growth of the independent merit shop electrical contractors through workforce development and apprenticeship. We are the other four-year program training electrical apprentices in residential, commercial, and industrial sectors. IEC currently trains 20,000 electrical apprentices nationwide. IEC Southern New Mexico currently has approximately 110 apprentices registered in our program. We currently have about 200 individuals that have submitted interest in the apprenticeship program itself. And so with that, I am pleased to share that IEC Southern New Mexico has strategically used approximately 84,000 of our $200,000 allocation to directly address the critical skilled trades labor shortage facing our industry. A major highlight is the mobilization of our IEC mobile lab truck and trailer. This mobile classroom will allow us to bring electrical and construction training directly to students, workforce development opportunities, and job sites in Donaiana County. It is in its developmental stages and will be equipped with custom lab boards and tools. It provides the same quality hands-on experience as our main training center, right where people work, live, and educate. We also launched our new worker program built to introduce individuals to the trades. This program is a 40-hour course. We currently have 34 individuals that have completed this program. It includes soft-scale training to include communication, teamwork, and professionalism, basic tool and material identification and usage, safety instruction and job site awareness, workplace safety courses such as OSHA 10 CPR and forklift certification. These credentials increase employability and strengthen safety standards for both workers and employers across our county. We have modernized some training labs and expanded our lab capacity through new service panel installations, for our students to be able to wire and test circuits for hands-on. We've built mobile lab boards that demonstrate three- and four-way switch circuits, helping students visualize and complete live circuit exercises. As we continue to address the workforce need, these investments respond directly to the unprecedented workforce shortage. IEC National currently reported that 90% of construction is done by independent contractors. Associated builders and contractors say that the construction industry must attract 439,000 new workers in 2025 and half a million in 2026. National Construction Education Research Project says that 500,000 skilled workers are needed each year, and we are currently facing about 41% of the current construction workforce to retire in 2031. Locally, these national numbers translate to real opportunities and real urgency for training programs like ours. By using the ARPA funds, we've expanded access to modernize facilities, build transferable skills. And IEC New Mexico is preparing new workers for immediate employment, strengthening safety and quality standards, helping close skilled trades gaps that threaten local and regional growth. Together, we are not building careers, but we're helping sustain an entire construction industry pipeline for the coming decade. ARPA investment is delivering long-term value, equipping Las Cruces with skills to keep projects moving, families working, and our community growing. So we appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Our next group will be Engage New Mexico, with an initial award, excuse me, of $300,000, again, fully dispersed. Other scope of work was to support a two-year accelerator program for registered home providers who will gain valuable support and training to increase their credential levels and expand their businesses with the goal of transitioning to a licensed three-star-plus home provider. Presenting today will be Lori Martinez, Executive Director.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Members of the Council. My name is Lori Martinez. We are doing this program called Reaching for the Stars in an attempt to increase the number of home-based licensed providers in Las Cruces. We received the funds in December of 2024. I also want to make note that we're doing this project in partnership with some local community partners. And two of them are here today, Daisy Lira with Full Circle and Umberto with West. Also, the Small Business Development Center at Donaiana Community College. And so with this program, we are providing 10 currently registered home-based providers in Las Cruces with childcare mentorship and also small business support so that they can get the supports that they need. They're also receiving a grant. And the goal is to get them to licensed three-star status by July of 2026, which will allow them to serve more children. And our state uses a star system, and so five is the highest number of stars. So the higher the stars, the higher number of stars, the higher quality of childcare that you are providing. And so it provides, what we're trying to do is increase the number of licensed home-based providers and also helping provide them a sustainable business model so that we don't want to lose our home-based providers. In Donaiana County, historically, we have relied on home-based childcare providers at a higher rate than the rest of the state. During the pandemic, we lost a lot of home-based childcare providers, which was part of the impetus for this program. And so this is a pilot, but many of you have probably heard recently about the universal childcare announcement for New Mexico. Our state early childhood department has a goal of increasing registered home-based providers by 1,000, increasing the number of new licensed homes by 120. And so all of our candidates would fall into that category and increasing the number of centers by 55. As of September of this year, we have 10 who have been provisionally admitted. They've all completed an orientation. They are all currently pursuing or will be pursuing their child development certificate or equivalent. They have begun their business support and training with Full Circle, the Small Business Development Center, and West. And we'll continue moving through the program. So they have to do a number of things that involve their home environments, making sure that they're meeting all of the new state regulations, some of which are changing as we speak because of the new universal childcare announcement. I would like to point out that in recent years, because our state has made such significant investments into childcare, we are finally seeing some stabilization. So there was a national study done a few years ago that said that in the nation, it costs us $122 billion annually in economic cost. In New Mexico, that was estimated at $586 million. What we've seen in recent years, at least from 2023 to 2024, that in Donaiana County, the number of our childcare providers actually has doubled, almost doubled, not quite. And then the state has increased by about 59%. And so that suggests that the recent wage increases, the investments into our childcare providers' education and training, and a number of these public investments are starting to make a difference. I apologize. I had a quote on here from a provider who, we asked what interested you in Reaching for the Stars and what made you decide to apply, and wanted to make sure that you all got a chance to see that. This is someone who is likely to be at a five-star level, actually, by the time she finishes, that they're offering us the opportunity to become a licensed home daycare, which was something that was already on my mind, but it was just a little difficult because since I didn't have a lot of information for where to get everything I needed, because they would send me to a place and send me back because it wasn't the correct place. And I do want to point that out because as we go through these, there are a lot of regulations, as you can imagine, when children are involved. And so there are a lot of back and forth that a person has to do, not only getting all the right permits, but also many, many, many regulations from our New Mexico Administrative Code that they have to follow. And so that, I think, points to why the importance of this project and showing that when our providers get not only the business support that they need, but also the childcare mentorship as our providers are actually going out to their homes and guiding them, that it provides a more sustainable business model. Thank you for your time.
Our last presentation today will be from Donaiana Community College, with an initial award of $240,000. And again, funds have been fully dispersed. Scope of work was to support a four-to-six-week job training program for those at or below the poverty level, including those experiencing housing insecurity. Presenting today will be Mary Ulrich, Executive Director, and Kay Lilly, Senior Program Specialist.
Hey, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Kay Lilly, and I'm a Senior Program Specialist at the DACC Workforce and Community Engagement Division. Let me, there we go. We have been providing what we call the Personal and Career Discovery Program to the target population. So far, we have done six cohorts. I just started the seventh cohort. Our goal for the project was to graduate 150 people, and we're just halfway there. When we looked at the outcomes, almost 40% of those completing the program have already continued training and education, 25% are working, and 67% are living in more stable housing. The learners have shown consistent development of self-awareness, self-confidence, and planning for their future according to the pre- and post-self-assessments that we administer. We are providing you with some materials that profile some of the students that we have, but I wanted to give you an idea of what a cohort or a class looks like of the Personal and Career Discovery Program. This past Friday, we just started a new cohort. We had 34 community members joining this time. While we typically limit the enrollment to 15, we had so many people from the community waiting for the program that we decided to expand and get everybody in before the end of the year so that they didn't have to wait until 2026. This cohort includes one young man who was just released from prison the previous day, another young man who had walked into the workforce center on Thursday, just having been released a week before. There were several women in active recovery from addiction, a single father, two people with disabilities, four men from the halfway house, an immigrant, and a gentleman living at Tent City. The age span of these class members is from early 20s to about 60. We've also had people as young as 16, folks with autism, cerebral palsy, Down syndrome. So you can see that it's a very diverse group of people that gather together to reclaim their identities, reshape their narratives, and determine their own futures that include how they're going to contribute to the workforce. And in the process, they build community with each other. And in the process, they build community with each other.
Good afternoon, Mary Ulrich. I'm here to just kind of wrap up this session. I'll move to the next slide or wrap up this slide. As you heard Kay talk about, we've been reaching some of the most marginalized community members. We've taken a look at a ZIP code analysis of our students, and 70% of our learners are coming from the two most distressed ZIP codes from the distressed communities, Community ZIP Code Website, I think is what it's called. So we're really reaching our target population there of helping people who need the most help. We've also been able to strengthen some partnerships through this program. We have a local group now, Community of Hope, the Halfway House, Zia Recovery, and America's Job Center, as well as the Southern New Mexico Correctional Facility. We're going to run a cohort for them in the spring. And another group that we've just started to connect with is Angels with Broken Wings. And so this is forming a very strong partnership of referrals and support systems for our community members in this program. We are also developing with some other funding through Kellogg Foundation. We're developing a facilitator's guide and training with a consultant, and we are training three facilitators right now. So we're really looking to expand the program and see how we can reach more people. Because this program is really actually becoming a cornerstone of our workforce development that we're doing at DACC. This is becoming an important piece in their journey to find out where they want to go, what additional training they want to do, and what next steps they need to take. For our next steps, we are building out a reentry program with additional services. The Personal and Career Discovery Class will be a cornerstone of that program as well. And as I mentioned, we're finalizing our facilitator training to expand, and we are also creating some DACC-led social enterprises for work readiness training for our trainees. We have a couple of publications that have been profiled, our students. So I have those here. I don't know if I should pass them out or just leave them there. I can't. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, for hanging with us through this process. To close this out, I just wanted to address the fact that the U.S. Treasury has not currently provided any information as far as what requirements will be for closeout of the ARPA funds. The Department of Finance here continues to monitor this, and we will proceed accordingly once we have received instruction. I also wanted to take at this time a moment to thank the wonderful group of people behind me. Without them, I don't know what to do, what to say with this wonderful community coming together. In the three and a half months I've been working with them, I'm absolutely floored by what they've managed to accomplish. So thank you, everyone. At this time, we stand for questions.
All right, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
And good job for your first one. Great.
We got through it.
You, well, almost. Counselor Flores?
I have a question for the presenter from Cruces Creative.
Hi, Sandy Smith.
Yeah, hi. Thank you so much for your presentation. I was just wondering if there's Jardín de los Niños or Community of Hope. Nicole indicated that there are people who are being job-trained, but what I wanted to ask was whether you still have programs for adults. I know when it started out several years ago, there were programs for adults, and there's a lot of usable, like a lot of, what's the word, not crafts, but actual skills that produce, can produce an income. Do you still have that?
So Cruces Creatives is still a maker space that's open to the community, meaning that members are able to come in and use the tools that are there. Membership can happen either through an actual paid monthly membership or through volunteer hours. In terms of our ability to offer extensive training for adults specifically related to job skills, we have not secured funding to be able to do that. We did actually have a little bit of a conversation about whether or not there was a partnership that could be developed, and it's something that we're interested in pursuing further. It's just a question of funding. With the ARPA funds coming to a close and those being so focused on the youth, we are actually looking at how do we stay alive as an organization in terms of what we can offer the community? And we are trying to find the ways that we can find partnerships or additional grant opportunities or contracts or whatever it takes to keep our staff that know so much. Like, we've accumulated some really amazing people who have deep skills, who could be useful in that kind of partnership. We've just got to find the funding for it. Does that answer the question?
Minor detail, you just have to find the money.
Yeah, you know, so if y'all take your pocket for the link, whatever.
Yeah, I just wanted to, well, I'm sure Nicole's well aware of all the opportunities for the people at the service, but I just wanted to.
So that quilt donation that we dropped off, when we took that over, we did start having some conversations about what could potentially be useful there.
Yeah, yeah.
Actually, you know what? I'm realizing I may be talking, I was speaking to Il Hardín in terms.
El Hardín de los Niños?
Yes, but I just realized, Nicole, raise your hand. Okay. We have not had conversations. I'm thinking of an earlier presenter. Il Hardín and Cruces Creatives started talking about some potential training for the parents of their kids. So if you want to have more conversation with me, I'd love to.
Okay. Oh, well, at least there's a conversation going on, and maybe there'll be some fruition. It'll materialize one day soon. Thank you so much for your work and your comments. Thank you.
Counselor McLeod?
This might be a question more for staff, but I know that there was sort of discussions on being able to aid the Boys and Girls Club with some additional funding that the county might be willing to do a match, and I was wondering if there's any update on that.
Counselor, I'm not part of those conversations. I do apologize.
No, at this time, I don't think there's any updates.
Thank you.
But I know that was one that we've talked about because they fall in our MRAs and different things like that, so there are some options, and those discussions will come in the future, I believe. Anyone else?
Counselor McLeod?
Then I'm going to get one more in. The family prosperity, is there a way for that to continue? Are we looking at some, just beyond ARPA? I'm curious.
Thank you for the question, Counselor. Where there's a will, there's a way. Don Hummer, for the record. Right now, we're looking at a variety of different ways. I've talked to, I think, several of you regarding looking at just some of the options that the city may have to just help us to continue it. I keep telling everyone that when we do a program like this, even one family is better than zero families. So whatever we can kind of hodgepodge pull together, which is what we did to start this program to begin with. And so right now, we are looking at potentially cannabis tax revenue. We are in discussions with DACC. Hopefully, maybe they can help us identify some funding to help with some of their students. We are obviously always looking at the state level. These types of programs work when there is a public and a private partnership, so we're certainly still looking at private donations, foundations, and a lot of other things. So currently, we do not have the funding.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question.
Counselor Flores?
Hi, Don, how are you?
I'm good, thank you.
I love your energy.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I love the work you do. Everybody who presented today, you're all, they're miracles. I mean, they really are. You're changing people's lives and all that. So now I forgot what I was going to ask you.
Thank you for the compliment. We, you know what, I will speak on behalf of my colleagues. We need that. Like, we need that because we are just so tired right now. Our hearts and our souls and our minds and our bodies are so tired. So yes, thank you for saying that.
Yeah. So I really, I forgot, I was so busy, you know, just thanking you for your presentation, and everybody who presented, every organization who is here has made life at least a little bit better and for many, and probably life courses have changed as well.
I believe that to be true. Thank you for that.
Yeah, and I think the people who are benefiting the most are the children who can have that hope. But thank you, everybody, and I'll probably call you at midnight, okay?
Of course, that is not a problem.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And again, to everyone else, thank you. Thank you for this update, for the status update, everything. It's tremendous. It shows what improvement can be done with just a little bit of increase in funding from economic development, childcare, healthcare, mental, education, housing, workforce. You know, it all came together as a community. You're absolutely right, Brian, that couldn't do it without the members that are behind you. Tremendous kudos to our community and what you've done with that. And we'll continue to look in the future. This is a great update, so when we start doing our strategic planning, we can look at some of these things that have taken place in our community and how we can move forward with it, and that's what I like to do. I do have one question for Michelle with, you know, and it was mentioned earlier about the universal, the free universal childcare that is going to come next week. So how is that going to affect you and if there is any effect or any benefits for you?
Sure. Michelle Adams, for the record. For Jardín de los Niños, we serve families who fall in the extremely low to moderate-low levels. So for our families, one of the biggest challenges is when a family faces homelessness, it takes our team approximately three to six months just to help support them when they've, for example, fled domestic violence and left everything behind, birth certificates, social security cards, any records. It takes our team, and I have my wonderful Director of Family Services, Alma Ketcher side with me, and her team actually spends quite a bit of time helping the families just to gather all those documents. So for us, I think one of the biggest ways that we're going to benefit from the universal childcare is that the amount of documentation that's going to go into just getting families qualified, it's going to help us to be able to maybe circumvent some of that time. But the reality is that we're still going to face some challenges, I think, because of the families that we serve. They don't necessarily have, you know, there was a survey that the ECCD sent us to see if, how many families would, who are paying, would now qualify. And because we serve extremely low poverty-level families, the reality is that we're going to continue as normal operations. But we also recognize that there's really not a whole lot of space to take on new, we're at full capacity in our center. I know that on the campus, we do have a master plan in place where Jardín is expected to grow, possibly double in size, but that'll be down the road. At that point, I sure hope that they'll still have universal childcare, that that's going to be a benefit for families, because I do know that it's going to benefit families. I just don't know that, I'm not too sure that as an organization, we're going to be able to help support, because we've already, we're at full capacity. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, it does. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you, Brian. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your time today.
Next is item 2.3, Improve Las Cruces Community Improvements Bond Update. Sarah Gonzalez.
Good afternoon, City Council. Sarah Gonzalez with Community Development. And before you is the update for the Community Improvement Bonds, which is regarding the GRT funding in which we had approved last year in November. So we did bring this forth for a work session in August, and where we basically put together or compiled a list of city councils' recommendations or considerations for projects to move forward with GRT funding. From that, we took that to the public in September and October to get a feel essentially for what the public wanted to see as part of the GRT funding to be used. So today, we'll provide that update and what our next steps are to be moving forward. Here's the long list of projects in which we brought to the public to get a feel for what their four priorities would be based on each type of either project, from maintenance to parks, utilities, or to any of the improvement projects we'd like to see. As you can see on the top, we did get a lot of support for the Branigan Library Phase One remodel and renovation, and a lot of their supporters did come out to see that that project moved forward. Some of that can be considered as possibly a geo-bond project for next year, as we'll be in a new geo-bond cycle, and so that may be an opportunity for us since that is one of our projects that are shovel-ready. The other projects that came out and basically were presented as a higher category would be the new recreation center. Consideration was though, where would that new recreation center go? And so there were still some questions that generated with the public as far as us getting their responses and their input. And we also did see areas of where you want to see maintenance. So this would be our existing facilities, whether they'd be recreational facilities, trail systems, any of our remodels for police and fire. And one of the higher ones that we will get to as we go and separate some of these slides would be the new facility that's possibly located for Police and Fire Station Number One. When you break these down further and we look at just our top 15 projects, you can see, of course, you start with a lot of the recreational facilities, your Branigan Library, your Recreation Center, some of the utility facilities that we want to see improved, as well as parks, housing opportunities to actually work into Phase Two and Three of Paseo Verdez. We also see police and fire and road maintenance coming in. We've separated all these out to kind of go through each category to get a better understanding of where the priorities are listed and where they're labeled. So when we start looking at maintenance projects, your top three are going to be the WI rehab, road maintenance, which a lot of people, basically off of the East Mesa, was in support for road maintenance. They're still off of either dirt roads, maybe in septic, don't have paved, don't have full utilities. And we also see ADA compliance, and those are going to be in our existing facilities. And so improvements need to be made in order to become ADA compliant. When you're looking at public facilities, they're broken down into the primary three, which would be Branigan Library's renovations. And we also did see a lot of support for the Eastside Senior Center. We know that that's going to be a building that will need purchasing as well as renovation here in the near future. We also see the Railroad Museum. That is one of the city's historic buildings, as it was constructed, and that's why the railroad was basically coming into town. And so that's another building that did receive support from our public. When you move into parks, you start to see that there is the new recreation center that comes up top on the list. Once again, those are those questions of where is that park going to be located? It will be on the west side of town, or is it going to be on the east side of town? Then you move into legacy improvements. This is going to be all of our parks that are existing, improvements to either playground equipment within these parks, maybe it's a full renovation of the park. It could be restrooms, it could be facilities, it could be trail systems leading to those parks. When you're looking at public safety, we did see a lot of support as far as providing our police and fire with the appropriate vehicles and maintenance to maintain those as they're getting new cadets graduating from their academies. They are looking to improve and make sure that there are vehicles and maintenance for those vehicles to keep them on the road. And the other section we did see was the new police and fire station one. We know that the fire department does need remodeling within their existing facility based on its age. However, there was support actually for the new police and fire station to actually make it more feasible and actually a larger space in order to raise it up and actually hold more cadets. When you're looking through utilities, you start to see that there is a proposed new wastewater treatment facility off Highway 70 in East Mesa. And then you move towards essentially Waterwell Number 23, which is near Coles, where they would just want to do some renovations and remodeling for those. Infrastructure projects were very limited as far as we have road maintenance separated from the infrastructure projects. These would be two new ones. So when you look at these, there is still support for both. The Angler and Del Rey connection would help relieve some of the traffic that is currently coming off of Metro Valley's development in Sonoma Ranch. And so that connection would provide us another outlet for the public to actually get to Highway 70, or even to possibly that connection if NMDOT comes through with the Del Rey interchange. Then you have the South Fork Moreno Drainage. A lot of the flooding within that area takes place, and so there is consideration to put in. And so there is consideration to put in either more coverts, actually create better roillos, kinda divert that water and change that out. Um, lastly, we only had one housing project that was listed within there, but this would just be the continuation. Currently, we are meeting with everyone to do Paseo Verde's Phase One through the Housing Authority, or through Natalie's group and Housing and Development. And so this would just be exchanging essentially more funding to where we can go ahead and start Phase Two and Three. So what we have essentially were the next steps for City Council. Essentially, the bond would be approved in January, and then the sale for this would come through in February for the sale of these bonds. That would be coming in from Finance and Treasury. During that time, staff is requesting for us to further take the projects in which we've identified, now that we've had City Council and the public's input, to further scope them and understand and identify what that funding will mean. And so during that timeframe, we would present these in early February, basically at the budget or CIP retreat. We want to basically put these into the CIP budget, so that way we have an understanding of how these are going to be approved on a yearly basis. We also know that that ties in with any of our other funding sources that may be available. So that way, if we do find that some of these projects may be done through a different funding source, whether it is through CIP, whether it is, um, capital outlay project, in some other form where we can get funding, we can start to outline what funding we may still need. The way that the bonding process will work is there will be essentially a first read in December of 2025 with adoption in 2026. Then the bonds will go out for sale in February of 2026, and City Council will then be provided an update in March. Once we close in March of 2026, that will basically mean the funds are available for us to go ahead and use to support these, these bonds or these projects. This is why we would say to hold off in adopting any of the projects as we can further scope and get them ready for basically the CIP budget. That's where we'll see another work session take place and actually come back with the real funding, the real numbers, and a fuller scope to understand what we are dealing with on these projects. I think the one thing we all gained from understanding what the public saw, as well as City Council, is a lot of these projects have a lot of funding associated with them. They are not inexpensive projects to actually accomplish. And so having a better understanding with a fuller scope to know where we need to move forward takes our first steps in the next, um, physical year. And then I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Sarah. Uh, Councilor Flores?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Sarah, for your presentation. That last comment you made, that, um, there are certain, the funding part about, uh, certain projects are prioritized, or...
Mayor, Councilor Flores, I believe you're going towards, if we have the, so we would be using the GRT funding for the projects that we had listed. The way that we can actually tackle a lot more of these is if there's other funding sources that are also available.
For those same GRTs?
Exactly. So some of these we could be using at the same time.
For the, for that particular project, or focus on others that don't have any funding?
So to kinda give you an example, if we were to go back and take, the number one priority that we received was the Brannigan Library. If we were to go and say, let's put that on the geo-bond for next year as our bond cycle, that would eliminate it from having to go through the GRT process. So we've eliminated a project to actually put into a project list. We'll have a different funding source if it were to go in November and be approved. Only because it'll give it a different option, so we don't have to use GRT funding. That means now we go to something else on that list, and we kinda go through just to see where those projects lay out based on the funding sources we have.
Okay.
If we're able to get any funding from the state, if we're able to get any capital outlay. All of those funding sources play into tackling this list that staff put together to say, these are a lot of the priorities now that we've heard from the public.
So my next question is, how do you do it? I mean, so there's a lot of, it's, it's like a chess game, so.
Mayor and Councilor Flores, that would be correct, yes. It's, when we heard from the public, I think a lot of it was to rely on maintenance, rely on the existing infrastructure, rely on the existing buildings, and focus on redevelopment of these sites that people are currently using and going to right now. When you take these numbers and look at them, even with it being, you know, a hundred people or so, the hundred people who showed up to say that this is what mattered were those existing facilities. They wanted safer living spaces for our police and fire departments if they were living in conditions that needed to be, you know, safer. They wanted areas where maintenance and recreation and play were going to be improved, because they wanted to see their area grow in the areas that they're in, as opposed to just creating some of the new projects that are coming in. Newer projects always take additional funding, but that doesn't mean that we can't work towards designing them and then reaching out to the state for that funding. A lot of times, a department doesn't have the funding to actually design some of these projects. So we have to work towards, let's get them the design, which is generally eight percent of a total value, and then be able to take that to legislation and say, hey, we have the design, can we get funding? Sometimes that is an opportunity.
It, it's probably a good way to go, too, 'cause there's already something in the, whatever, in the works. Thank you so much. Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Corran?
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you for this presentation and the input. I know the residents in my district were very excited to be given the stickers and apply them as they did. Um, there are a couple of things that I just want, sort of to follow up on a little bit of what Councilor Flores was saying and what you were saying, but first, you, at the thing you told me, if we just had a big check, what would it be for all of these projects? Can you just share that? 'Cause it's actually not that big, shockingly. If we just said, we're gonna do everything, what would it be?
Mayor and Councilor Corran, the number would be about 180 million. Now, you have to subtract that from all the road improvements, because we've all learned, I just learned based on this meeting, that one mile of a local roadway is $9 million. That is very difficult when you start looking at those numbers. But you take all those other projects, and yes, we're at about 180 million dollars. But that's where we have to look at what we have today. Every year that we increase, we change that number by, even if you give it a 10% contingency, that's where we're at. But yes, it is not as bad as we think they could be.
Yeah, I mean, it's not billion with a B. That's, that was, that was, I thought that was great.
That's all the other projects.
So I guess one of the things that I wanted to ask was related to the timing and the bond sale seeking and the unknown variables, right? There, that's based, all of those things that you mentioned, state funding, um, the geo-bond, et cetera, those are all completely unknown. Um, do we have to, and I say we, you know, we as a city, we as a council, we as an entity that's seeking money, what, what level of detail and specificity do we have if we go for the bond sale in, on the shorter term, in terms of the things that it will be including versus the longer term? Um, how much flexibility or inflexibility is there in that process in terms of the timing? Because I know the bond decision, I think, is like next August, right? That's ish, next July would be when the geo-bond, the geo-bond decision-making happens. And that's a slightly asynchronous from this timeline. So I'm just curious if you can talk about what, how specific do we have to be in the short term? Um, versus the medium term, versus the geo-bond conversation time? Like if we said, oh, we'll wait and put the library on the geo-bond, and then the geo-bond didn't pass, and then the library wasn't part of this initial bond, getting this initial bond, that would be, right? That would be a bad series of events. So can you talk a little bit more about that?
Mayor and Councilor Corran, I think the part we have to be mindful would be, is every two years, we're bonding 20 million. So when we're looking at the funding necessary even just for the Brannigan Library, if it were not to be approved, then we would be looking at that for two bond cycles. Because every year, we're, we're increasing it, but we're only getting 20 million for the two years. That would take the full amount to basically fund the one project. Um, and so I think, even if we look at short term, I think we have to come up with a solution or an option that's going to give us flexibility, whether it becomes, you know, we have maintenance projects and we wanna tackle a piece of some of these, but no, we wanna get them completed, so we put so much funding into each bucket essentially. Um, or maybe we say, if this doesn't go through, this becomes our priority, and then have the backups that go with them, right? So necessarily, maybe you don't use the funding right off saying, we sell the bond, we're gonna use the funding right now. No, we wait to see what happens through the geo-bond cycle. If it doesn't work, and then we say that is our priority, then we move that up to the top. I think that's where this has to be moved to next year, so we can have further discussions of understanding where we prioritize, how many projects we wanna put into that list, where do we wanna set the bar for each year, as this is something new that's coming onboard for the city. So we don't wanna set the something out for 20 years. You probably wanna do something within the first four. What can we tackle and accomplish within four years and still be amenable to? If all of these happen, okay, let's come back and bring in something else. We can always do that through the budget cycle, through CIP, and say, hey, these all got tackled through legislative funds. Let's come in with some more projects. So I think we'd be looking at four years.
So, uh, thank you. That is very helpful. So, but when we, if we go to say we're going up for the bond, do we have to say, how, how much do we have to have? Or do we just give them like this big list and say, like, it might be any of these? We'll see, uh, when you send in the information for the bond, I guess, is, in Feb, I think that was like Feb, before February, that we have to do that. So I guess that's what I'm, do, do we have to make a very short-term decision? Is sort of what I'm asking you right now, um, or not?
Mayor and Council, um, Laura's gonna come up here and assist me.
Hi, Mayor, Councilor Corran, um, Laura Hogueen for the record. Um, the question that would be proposed on the bond ordinance can be very broad. So you can say for public facilities, public infrastructure to include roadways, it's not gonna be narrow scoped to a specific project, so that way there's some flexibility within the funding to be able to apply it to those projects that are needed.
Thank you. That's what I was curious about, because the geo-bond is very, much more specific and narrow. So I just wanted to get clarity around this type of other bond that, that this is. So that helps. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilor McClure?
This, this feels like a little bit of a strange question, but how much do you sort of balance projects based on sort of all kinds of different factors? I'm thinking of, yay, I'm, I'm a library supporter, but a lot of people are. And so that kinda comes a little bit more naturally, though that's gonna grow and people are gonna be interested in it. But I think of South Fork Moreno, where it's only a couple of people who are interested, but that area kinda got swallowed by the city, and to, to sell that to folks is, is a hard one. That said, at one of the meetings, I had a young'un who was like, no, I, I definitely understand detention ponds. And I was like, wow, I love that. That makes that way easier. So how do you kinda balance, like, for example, that area hasn't seen improvements for at least 20 years, from what I'm gathering, asking some of former councillors, legislators, to say, hey, now it's time to do this, to kinda balance what we can do in the time that we have? So that, that's, seems like a very philosophical question, so roll with it as you can.
Mayor and Councilor McClure, I think the way that one staff is gonna have to approach this is to see if there is additional funding sources to start with. Just because I know within that project, you know, it came in at a project scope of about 15 million dollars, which is a lot when you're looking at, some of these projects are going to tie in and be multiple years that we're gonna have to tackle them based on the GRT funding availability. So I think first, it would be, what other opportunities do we have for funding? And then second, going in and saying, all of these are priorities. I think we'd get the same concern from anybody living off East Mesa who's been tied to a septic tank. And I think we have to be cognizant of where those areas are, knowing that we annexed them in '87. We need to do these improvements. We need to make these modifications. And so whether it's we start doing some of those funding projects and see where we can take bits and pieces and start accomplishing more to make headway, not necessarily maybe doing all of the improvements at once, but at least putting dents into them, that's where I think staff is gonna have to get together in order to prioritize what some of those needs are, knowing that the impacts are becoming greater.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. No, I totally agree with the timeline that you've, uh, presented that, you know, 'cause, you know, you think about the pavement management index, and there's already projects that are in line there. And once we, the staff kinda absorbs all the data from the input from the residents, it can start looking at what projects are duplicated or would be removed, so that that way we have that funding available. And the initial question, I believe, was public safety, critical infrastructure in parks. Is that correct? So, you know, letting staff come back in the budget retreat with what the residents have provided, and then looking at the basic question and outlining it and making decisions then. And I think at that time in, in February, we can pretty much then identify what we want for the geo-bond, because that'll, that'll have to be in the spring, 'cause then it will be next November.
Mayor, that is correct, yes. We would be taking that for a vote in November. So yes, we'd be identifying early on which ones would actually be going for the bond.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, thank you. I know there was, uh, an individual from the library that wanted to have a few minutes. Come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council members, um, and members of the city staff. I'm Linda St. Clair. I'm the president of the Friends of the Brannigan Memorial Library. So you can guess that I would like you to give all of your money to us, except I actually kind of wouldn't. I really appreciated the, um, priority meetings that you had for all the different communities and was extraordinarily impressed with the staff and everyone answering questions of the people who were there about the different projects. And it would be impossible to walk away from that without feeling like all of these things are so incredibly important. So I really, um, commend you all and your, your staff in particular about having to try and figure out how to balance these things. And, um, Councilor McClure's question about, you know, the library's really important to a lot of people, but if we have a, you know, environmental spill because the sewer lines go, that's more catastrophic potentially. So while I think that the library is really important, and I'm sure it is critical that we get it funded, the Friends of the Library will continue our work as well to try and come up with additional funding, both through petitioning you and petitioning at the state level and our own fundraising activities. But I just wanted to thank you for starting this process off by passing the master plan for the library a year ago. And I think the amount of work done by the architects and the planners and the library staff to make sure that we have something that can truly be a heartbeat, um, for our community is really important. We have an amazing library staff who's done a lot to keep that, um, beating heart of our community working, despite the fact that we've had so much growth in the community relative to the number of people that we were serving when it was first built. So while I hope that we can make a progress in less than 10 years on your timeline, Councilor Flores, um, I do commend you all for working very hard to balance these things. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. So that was it, Sarah? You wanted to make some comments? Okay, I'll let a couple of you come up. We'll give you a couple of minutes.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. My name is Lucas Hernan. I'm a resident of District Two. And I wanna echo, uh, the, um, the statements just made about the staff and conducting the, the surveys, the open meetings. It was really well done. Um, I felt very involved in my community, and I, I just wanted to commend the, the, all the staff that took part and, and Council for putting that on. Um, and I do just wanna, I have a couple of questions and comments, I suppose. Um, first question is, I do have some, I'm curious about the funding. You mentioned that something about 180 million. Our estimates, based on the numbers that were on all the boards for all the projects, puts the total at close to half a billion dollars for everything, so maybe we're not understanding. But as presented at the presentations, this would be half a billion dollars worth of funding we would need for all of these projects. So just, if I could get clarity there, that'd be wonderful. Um, two, I, I just wanna flag, 'cause we did, we hand-counted all of the votes at every single meeting. Uh, we took pictures, so we have, you know, we can keep a record ourselves. Our numbers thankfully match what the city has presented, which is wonderful to see. Um, but one quick thing is that when you went through your project, your x-axis changes wildly. Um, so when you say support for certain projects, um, yes, that's true on your x-axis, but if you keep that x-axis at 60, uh, there is, it's very clear what the community does and does not support. Um, so I just wanna flag that for you all, as you're making decisions, please keep in mind, as the data is being presented to you, what that ax, x-axis looks like. Um, and when we talk about overall support, um, just for instance, uh, you know, the public, public funding for Public Works, um, is vastly, uh, vastly more supported than, um, for instance, funding more infrastructure for the police, as, as an example. Um, the, nothing, nothing with, nothing related to the police had, was in the top eight. And if you actually use the ranking system that the city provided with one through four, they drop out of the top 10. So just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Sarah, did you wanna address the dollar value?
Mayor and City Council, based on the numbers that were provided during the public meetings, um, we did have to adjust those numbers based on re-roofs we had started out with. meetings, we did have to adjust those numbers, based on re-roofs we had started out with were around $300,000, it went to 9 million. So the numbers are still within the 180, what we would attempt to tackle, I would say, so necessarily, if you had all the re-roofs there, we're not going to accomplish every re-roof within those projects. We had listed some of them as locations, and so those priorities would change. And so if we go and add in every building with every facility, that's where we'd be looking at those higher numbers. And when we first brought these forward to Council, we did have a limited number of either public facilities, parking lots, or any of the improvements that were there. As we further scoped them, per request after City Council, we did get better numbers that were going to identify those. And so they're still within those range, based on the projects that we actually list and want to actually accomplish.
I'm sorry, Mayor, can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes, go ahead.
Thanks. Sarah, I think you said in your presentation, though, that maybe the disparity we're looking at is, the 180 million, we took out anything road-related? Was that what you said? And I'm wondering if that's the disparity, if we put roads into this, then we would be looking at that half a bill?
Mayor and Council, we'd probably be looking at a lot more. We did not include that as part of those numbers, as those came in right after City Council, when our meeting took place, and that's where Counselor Ben Como had mentioned to add in, where's this dent for the road infrastructure? Our numbers increased only in the sense of the increase in either re-roof projects. We had a limited number that we put on there, we resculpted those and increased the amount that would be necessary. Any of our parking or paving projects that were going to be necessary. We did not include essentially the municipal court, as that was going to be a new building that would essentially have to be taking place as opposed to a remodel. So some of those factors were modified and changed.
Cool. Thanks.
Thank you, Sarah. Did you want to speak?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. My name is Erin Cavedo. I had to bring my computer up, because I have spreadsheets. The clarifying point on the budget is very helpful, thank you, because all we did literally was just add up every single number provided in the community meetings to get the close to, well, it's more than half a billion total. And you write, the roads wasn't included whatsoever. So we were figuring that was a low estimate. But yeah, the way staff is choosing projects, I would just really love some more clarity on, we weren't sure, obviously, how everything was going to be weighted. There were votes, one through four, so if we look at votes by weight, that is including first-place votes, counting for four points, through a third-place vote, sorry, first-place counting for four, second-place counting for three, et cetera. We can see the top 10 projects don't include any police funding whatsoever. So if you look across city, six city meetings, we get Brannigan Library, we get the REC Center, we get, we get the WIA Center, the new wastewater treatment, Waterwell 23, sewer force maintenance replacement on Highway 292, the Legacy Park Replacements, Eastside Senior Center purchase, Paseo Berdades Phase One and Two, and the Medical Transport Unit funding. So that's the top 10, if you look just, again, votes by weight across all the meetings. And then if you look at just the first-place ranking, again, we have, we have Brannigan Library, we have REC Center, Paseo Berdades, sewer force main replacement, road maintenance, new wastewater treatment, again, top eight, don't include any police budget whatsoever increase. So the fact that it's now broken down into categories that include one just specifically for cops is a little bit odd to me, and I'm just a little bit concerned and would love some clarity around that. And if anybody would like to meet with me and look at spreadsheets on the City Council, I would love to do that. Thanks.
Thanks. Sarah, anything else to add?
Mayor and City Council, just to clarify as to why the public safety was separated out, we did separate them all out based on the project types of where GRT was approved. So we did have where it was maintenance projects, parks, public safety, which included fire and police, and then you would have any critical infrastructure improvements. And so that's why they were separated out into those categories.
Okay. Thank you, Sarah. All right. That wraps that one up. We'll go to item 2.4, the GeoBond Quarterly Update.
Good afternoon, Council. For the record, my name is Kyle Aron, your interim Public Works Director, and we're here to give you an update on the GO Bond from 2022. This is, I think, the eighth or ninth update. So we'll keep this pretty brief, as you've heard most of this material several times before. As you may recall, the 2022 GO Bond included these projects, which Natalie and I will provide your brief update. Fire Station 9 includes $9.8 million of GO Bond. The construction contract is for $11.2 million, with approximately half expended to date. Remaining funds will be utilized to purchase furnishings and equipment. As you can see from the photos, the shell of the building is taking shape, and anyone driving by the site can begin to see how it will look once complete. Overall, construction is approximately 55% complete, with an estimated completion date of June 2026. And you can see what the rendering of the final building will look like. The next project is the park improvements, of which La Llorona Park is the recipient, presently under construction. The current construction contract is for a little over $1 million for the restroom, shade structures, and the bench. Remaining funds will be used on the playground equipment. The new shade structures and benches are nearly complete. The restroom is about 50% complete, and the project completion is expected by the end of this year. It'll be pretty tight, still quite a bit of work to do. The third question is for the East Mesa, originally it was written as Public Rec Complex, but now we refer to it as East Mesa Sports Complex, and I think we have a couple of other names for it as well, so sorry for the confusion on that. This provided $4.9 million, with an additional $4 million of additional funding to the project for a new playground, restrooms, additional lighting, and basketball courts. Couple miscellaneous other small items. As you can see from the photos, the playground was just recently completed. Work on the new restroom and basketball courts are 20% complete, and we are aiming for completion at or just after the beginning of the new year. With that, I'll turn it over to Natalie.
Hello, everyone. Natalie Green again. For the record, I have a video to show. So Peachtree Canyon Phase One and Phase Two, it is still under construction. Peachtree Canyon Phase One, again, is just under 60% complete. They have started sheet-rocking and stuck going most of the buildings. And kudos to Chuck in Public Works, who does all of my drone videos. And then I want to celebrate that Peachtree Canyon Phase Two actually broke ground a couple of weeks ago, so they're working on some of the underground infrastructure, and it should appear momentarily. Sorry, it's the longest of the videos. Maybe I'll fast-forward. Oh, there. You can start to see Phase Two taking shape on the backside of that. Amador Crossing is also under construction, just for reference, right? We're not actually using GO Bonds on Amador Crossing, but I'd like to update you guys on the process. We are prepping for footings and the foundation. Many of the walls, you can see, are pre-framed, ready to go up once foundation is poured. We're currently evaluating some of our internet service providers, and we have selected some of the flooring and cabinetry. Arcadia Phase Four is a single-family subdivision in Metro Verde that is also under construction. It was funded by the State of New Mexico, so it's not funded by GO Bonds, but again, you're getting an update anyways, since I'm up here. The dirt work is complete. Installation of sewer infrastructure is also underway, and then we are currently working with the Affordable Housing Committee to identify which of the land bank properties will go to which nonprofits. So we're working on that disposition process, and we'll bring that recommendation to Council. Upcoming, because the state funded many of our projects, I forgot to mention that they also funded the entirety of Peachtree Phase One, so we have some substantial cost savings to the city, so we'll be returning some of that Tellshore Fund back to where it came from. But upcoming projects with some of our GO Bonds or state funds is Skylark Subdivision that will be breaking ground November 9th. They should actually get their notice to proceed by the end of the week. They wanted groundbreaking on Halloween, but I didn't think us with shovels and costumes would be that entertaining. Well, it might be entertaining, but as appropriate as at, for the press releases. Royal Crossing pre-commitment will be coming forward. They are applying to the 9% low-income housing tax credit round at MFA's competition in the new year. And then I did want to announce that we are working on an upcoming Affordable Housing Plan in collaboration with that county. That survey is live and can be found on the city's website at loscruces.gov/conplan. And that survey will be live till December 12th. And that includes both housing needs in the city of Los Cruces and in Dona Anna County. And we'll continue to do some additional outreach with that. And with that, Kyle and I will stand for questions.
All right. Thanks, Natalie. Thanks, Kyle. Any questions? Good update. Kyle, I do have a question, just, on Fire Station 9, who's the project manager? Who's leading that one?
That's going to be Chuck, I believe.
Chuck's doing that one?
It was Armando, but Armando's moving to another position, and we got a new guy coming on board.
Okay. All right. Good. I think we're good. We'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Second, Graham.
This is on the motion to adjourn the meeting. Counselor McClure?
Yes.
Counselor Matisse?
Yes.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Corrigan?
Yes.
Counselor Flores?
Yes.
Counselor Ben Como is absent. And Mayor?